For Monday, May 23rd, 2016. Ms. Warner, can I have a call to order?
Councilmember Abdellgawad, here. Councilmember Barber, absent. Councilmember Burke, absent. Councilmember Holman, absent. Councilmember Hubach?
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Present.
Councilmember Stevens?
Present.
Councilmember Morehead?
Present.
Mayor Turnbow, absent.
Thank you for the roll call, and now for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a presentation for this, a proclamation for this evening. Ms. Haley, thank you for coming tonight. I have a wonderful presentation for, and proclamation for, a wonderful cause, which is the Missouri Retired Teachers Association, and I would please like to read this. Whereas, public education is the foundation of our society and vital to the strength and advancement of American democracy, and whereas, Missouri Retired Teachers Association and public school personnel aids in advancing education by supporting high standards of education, thereby strengthening the status of the teaching profession, and whereas, MRTA recognizes and honors education employees who have retired from active teaching, administration, or support positions, and whereas, MRTA promotes group and individual involvement in charitable projects and activities, such as classroom grants, and maintains interest and participation in education and community activities. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Christopher Turnbow, myself, and the rest of the Raymore Council, I do hereby proclaim June 8th, 2016, as Retired Educators' Day in the city of Raymore, and do hereby recognize and commend the significant contributions of educators. Ms. Haley, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's yours. Yes, absolutely. But would you like to make a comment or two for the council?
Well, thank you, council, for taking your time tonight to do this. And the retired teachers, of course, always support education, and I know Raymore has a good value and good school districts, so we're glad to have you recognize us at this time and know that even though we're no longer in the classroom, we're still working for your children. Thank you.
Thank you. I see there are no personal appearances, so we'll turn to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a report for the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. I wanted to update you on a couple of, a couple of things that are in, in addition to the staff report that we submitted this month. One is, I wanted to update council on the progress we are making with our mudjacking program this year. As council will recall, we are working our way through the Foxhaven area, and we've, based on a survey of the city, that area had the highest density of concrete, of sidewalk defects and repairs. So we've, we've started there. To date, we have repaired just over four, 1,400 feet of sidewalk. Now, this, the type of repairs that we're making would normally be the need to remove and replace the concrete panels. They were either sunk that far or deteriorated. That, based on bid prices we've received, equates to over $40,000 worth of work that would have been done by the contract, by contracted repair. We've spent a little over $1,000 on materials for that, for that work. Also, Mr. Stevens pointed out to me just before the meeting, we spent just a little over $40,000 for the mudjacker earlier this year. So we have, right now, achieved breakeven with that, with that piece of, piece of machinery. The second item, thank you. The second item I wanted to update council on is the progress we are making on the APWA accreditation as we are working our way through the self-assessment process. We have identified 418 management practices that we are responsible for and need to either develop procedures for or continue with the procedures we have in place. APWA defines the management practices as benchmarks for, for a well-organized or agency. To date, we are either fully compliant or partially compliant with 329 of those practices. So we are on, on target, and hopefully, we'll be extending an invitation to the APWA to come and audit our department sometime in, in the fall. And that concludes my staff report.
Great. Any questions? Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you for the report, Mike. A great report. Always good to hear that, especially to hear that, that has paid off within months since we've gotten that, that purchase, that mudjacker. I've got some questions. You've, you've explained these questions to me before, but I, I want to ask them again because I believe that they're, they're relevant and they need to be expressed and, and explained. How many linear feet in Foxhaven does staff estimate that there is to do?
I, I don't have a linear foot count at, at my, at my disposal. There are over 300 locations in the Foxhaven area that we are working on, and they, they vary in length. They vary in length from a couple of panels to 15 or 20 panels.
Okay. And then, the next question is, how long of a process does staff feel that it will take to remedy those problems that we can in that, in the Foxhaven area? How long does it, do you expect to be in that area to do that?
Probably, well, the progress we're making, it's hard, it's hard to say. What we are, we are, we are tracking our man-hours, we are tracking our materials, and our hope is to develop a work plan, a long-term work plan, because it is going to be a multi-year program like many of ours, and we would be presenting that to, to council as part of the budget process, just for, just for information. I think the funding, and we are also tracking funding to see if we need additional, additional material, but right now, we are just getting a handle on the productivity, and so we are tracking that, and we'll just update council as we go along.
And I appreciate that wholeheartedly, all the way across the board. And I know you will, but I'll ask, because at this point, we're basically $1,000 away from breakeven. We're probably already there. As far as I'm concerned, we're at breakeven point there. Everything else, in my opinion, is cost avoidances from this point forward with what we've got left in the city. And, great job, great job. I've, I've heard from the community that they have seen the crews out there. They're very satisfied with the work that, that has happened, and hats off to you and keep up the good work. So thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions at staff? Back to Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Howe is not here this evening to make the Arts Commission report, but she does, she will be available next Monday night during the other section of the work session if the council would have any Arts Commission questions that they'd like to put forth. She is, as you all know, in Las Vegas with our economic development team and the mayor. Sent me a picture this afternoon. They were in the, the, you've probably all heard about how large that particular convention center is. I mean, it's, you're talking in miles, and they, it was like 5.2, and they were at, they, they marked city blocks in there. And they were at 24th Street and had to get to 42nd Street in five minutes. And so you actually see Matt Tap in front of them all, and he's running down a crowded aisle at the convention center. So they're getting a lot of work done for us. She says it's very successful so far. My report is next Monday, May 30th. There is no council meeting because it is Memorial Day. I believe that it will be the first time, first Monday in five months, that you all have had off. Also like to report, we, we just received notification, Mr. Catterett let me know at 6:30 this evening, that the U.S. Census Bureau has updated our population estimate. As of July 1st, 2015, our population estimate is 20,374. Raymore has experienced a 6% growth rate with that number since 2010. That concludes staff report, sir.
Great staff report. I've seen no committee reports. We'll move to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to disol, or to resolve.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda to include Item A, City Council minutes for May 9th, 2016. Item B, reappointment of Sheldon Castleman to the park board. Item C, reappointment of Jennifer Sepola to the park board. Item D, reappointment of Brian Harris to the park board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous vote, 5 to 0, passes. Moving on to Item 9 for unfinished business, the second reading for Item A, delinquent occupational license freedom stop.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I would move that this item be postponed to the June 13th regular business meeting of the city council. Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to postpone this item until the second, second week of June. Any discussion? All in favor? Sorry, Councilmember Abdellgawad?
I'm just curious why we're postponing it without any discussion, any update? Do we have an update?
With this being as condensed of a council that we have, I feel that it'd be best that we have all people here in case there is discussion, that those can be taken place. At this point, I, I, I would rather that it be brought before a full council than a partial council. And that, that's why I bring this up at this time.
Mr. Zer, is a question. It's my understanding, the last time we discussed this, there was the open-ended issue that if the applicant resolved the issue prior to tonight, that the item could be removed from this without a discussion of the council. Is that correct?
That is correct. If the she, if the applicant had submitted all of the materials in preparation for this evening, is that, is that my understanding of your question?
Yes.
So if there, in fact, had been everything submitted prior to this evening, then it could, would have been removed from the agenda item as far as this is concerned, with all of the submitted materials qualifying for a full application.
And by implication, if we agree to this postponement, in essence, it serves as a continuance on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, it would, it would basically give an additional timeframe up to the second week of June, which is what I'm hearing as a postponement to a date certain. And that's the motion that I have heard come forward, which has also been seconded. Now, obviously, the council could consider hearing from the applicant if they'd like to know the status of the application, but at this point, your motion and your second are available for discussion and vote.
Is there any other discussion?
If I could dovetail off that, the reason that this continues to be on the agenda, obviously, had, had we received the application and the materials, this would have been, staff would have recommended that this be removed from the agenda for consideration tonight. This, this situation would have resolved itself. So, as, as of 5 o'clock this afternoon, staff had not yet received the application.
Okay. All in favor of the postponement? Councilmember Abdellgawad?
So we're proposing to postpone it without the business asking us to postpone it?
I, that's the way I interpret it.
That is correct. However, obviously, you have a motion and a, and a second on the table, and as I indicated, if you have an interest in hearing from the applicant with regard to the status, you are welcome to ask those questions of the applicant.
We do have a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? Vote is 4 to 1. It, to postpone.
Was the, the vote was 4 to 1?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. This is a ministerial matter. It is a, it calls for a majority of the council present at the dais this evening. So it does pass.
Moving to Item B, I'd ask Ms. Warner for the second read of Bill 3162.
The second reading of Bill 3162 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, adopting a procedure for considering redevelopment plans and tax abatement or exemption pursuant to Chapter 353 of the revised statutes of Missouri.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Item B, Second Amendment to the city economic development incentive policy.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Vote is unanimous. Yes to pass. Moving to Item C, Bill 3165. Ms. Warner?
The second reading of Bill 3165 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Kansas City Audio-Visual for the purchase and installation of a council chambers video system in the amount of $40,959.30, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3165.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve, and I'm sorry, I don't see the bill number here.
3165.
3165, Ward of Contract, City Council Chambers Video Equipment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Pass 5-0. Moving on to Bill 3167.
The second reading of Bill 3167 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to execute a change order, withdraw architecture and design for the municipal center, circle, municipal circle center design project, city project number 15-227-301, in the amount of $71,065.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3167.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that final consideration of Bill 3167 be postponed to the June 13th regular business meeting of the city council. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem, when we come back to take this off of the table, I would like to have an updated copy of what is proposed, because what I have in front of me, I've been told, is not the proper plan that's been drawn out. So I would like to know where it is, because here I see three office buildings, and then there's references being made in the emergency management as being a part of that. But emergency management was not a part of the bond issue, so I would have some references. I'd like to know some information more about that. And then, one, a question I would have is, if it's emergency management, there's just one person, why were there three offices? If it's for the park and recreation, then they, there's only two offices there, and there's three in there, so they need to let us know what they plan to do with the third person, because it's not good management to separate a department into two different areas. So I would like to know a little bit more about that when we discuss it at our next meeting.
Mr. Fearborn, you obviously have her requests. We have a motion and a second on the table to postpone. Any other discussion on that issue? Seeing none, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor? Vote is approved, 5-0. Moving on to Bill 3169.
The second reading of Bill 3169 by title only, and ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $4,090,000 principal amount of special obligation refunding and improvement bonds, Series 2016, of the city of Raymore, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and action in connection therewith.
Normally, I would ask to entertain a motion, but since this is a evolving issue with bonds, I would turn to Mr. Fearborn for an updated staff report.
I thank you, sir. The city council will remember your first reading of this was a parameters ordinance, the bonds for the general obligation bond, which is the next item on the agenda, sold today. So we will have a staff report for that one, as well as placement of the special obligation Series 2016 bond issue, which is also moving forward. So I would call on Mr. Goffey to make reports on both of these items.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Morehead, and council members. The first item on the special obligation bonds, as you may recall from first reading, serves two purposes. One is to complete the acquisition from Kansas City Power and Light of the streetlight system. And so that is moving forward, and we plan to close on this special obligation bond issue on June 1st, and that'll coincide with the acquisition of the streetlight system. That amount, the final amount, is of bonds that are being issued for that purpose is $1,995,000. And then the second purpose is a refinancing of a prior special obligation bond issue that was completed back in 2006. With that refinancing, it's going to generate interest savings of about $227,000 over the next several years, which results in a net present value benefit to the city of about $206,000.
Mr. Goffey, I noticed in our report, you stated an amount just under $2 million, but in our report, it was slightly over that. Could you explain? It sounds to me like there may have been a favorable day regarding all this process.
With first reading, we work off of estimated rates, estimated sources and uses. And so after the first reading, as we fine-tune the numbers, that's why the par amount of the bonds for the special obligation series went down from what you saw in first reading.
All right.
Also with us tonight are two representatives with your bond counselor firm, Gilmore &amp; Bell. Sid Douglas and Greg Deschler are just over my right shoulder.
And we'll wait for even more good news until the next agenda item, sir.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Goffey.
Thank you.
Okay. I will now entertain a motion to dispel of, dispose of Bill 3169.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Bill 3169, special obligation Series 2016 bond issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five votes in favor, passes. Moving on to the next item. Ms. Warner, ask for a read of Bill 3168.
The second reading of Bill 3168 by title only, and ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $7,300,000 principal amount of general obligation bonds, Series 2016, of the city of Raymore, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith.
Mr. Fearborn?
Thank you, sir. I would call on Mr. Goffey.
This series of bonds is the first series of what we believe will be two series of bonds from those bonds that were approved by the voters last month. And so, working with Mr. Fearborn and Ms. Watson, they've been very busy as of late, kind of putting together and orchestrating the plan of finance. And so, in, when kind of combining these, what we've attempted to do is take advantage of some favorable tax laws that, for those entities that issue less than $10 million of tax-exempt securities are able to deem or designate the bonds bank-qualified. So it, it provides more favorable interest rates. So that's kind of why we've, we've split this up. Earlier today, at 11:00 a.m., we went out through a competitive sell process using an electronic bidding platform that the city's used before and have had good results with. We thought earlier this morning that perhaps the interest rate or the true interest cost on the bonds would be around a 2.2%. And so certainly, three of the six bids were right around the 2.2%, but we're very pleased to report that there were three bids that were substantially lower interest rates than the 2.2%. The, what we believe is the winning and the best bid was from First Tennessee Bank at a 2.01%. So substantially lower than what we were expecting. But very good news. I think the city's AA2 bond rating is very helpful. We're also in the front side of what's likely to be a fair amount of supply of Missouri general obligation bonds coming up in probably the next 30 to 45 days. So again, congrats to, to the city and certainly to staff for getting this moving forward in such a quick manner. Before you tonight is, is the bond, is the bond ordinance to approve the 7.3 million. This issue, based on your action tonight, would close on June 2nd, and then the monies would be available to begin moving forward on, on project cost.
That's great news. Mr. Fearborn?
That concludes staff reports.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to resolve Bill 3168.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 3168, general obligation Series 2016 bond issue.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? See 5 to 0 in support? Moving on to Bill 3170.
The second reading of Bill 3170 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of streetlights from Kansas City Power and Light.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3170.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 3170, purchase of streetlights.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? 5 to 0 in favor? Moving on to Bill 3161.
The second reading of Bill 3161 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 115, Section 115.050, salaries of the Raymore City Code.
Entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3161.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I move that we approve Bill 3161, amendment to city code, salaries.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes 5-0. Moving on to new business. Ms. Warner, I'd ask for the first reading of Bill 3171.
The first reading of Bill 3171 by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Vance Brothers, Inc. for the 2016 micro-surfacing project, city project number 16-237-202, in the amount of $409,226.87, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council. This particular contract has three components to it. The first component is a portion of our regular street maintenance program where we've, we outlined the work that's going to be performed on the map that is attached to our staff report. Also, we have included two projects that were approved as part of the general obligation bonds, one being the recreation park parking lot rehabilitation, and then also some work on the recreation park trails. We did receive one bid for the work from Vance Brothers. As outlined in the memo, we do have a process whereby we evaluate when we receive a single bidder. Vance Brothers has performed the work for us for the past several years. In addition, we have attached to the memo, the, our internal contractor scorecard or vendor scorecard that is filled out by my staff, that gives us an indication of how, how well the contract performed. Did they have adequate manpower, those type of things. So we do recommend award of the contract to Vance Brothers and do look forward to working with them again this year.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3171.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor Protem. You can open it up for questions, please.
Yes, I apologize. Questions of staff, thank you.
And I have one. Thank you.
Councilmember Kellogg?
With due respect, I appreciate that. Mike, I remember a couple of years back, we had used a contractor that specialized in parking lot asphalt, and we hired them to do another job that we assumed that we, that they could do. I'm wondering if we, we're going to run into any problems with this contractor being able to do the, the different scopes of, of micro-surfacing. I, I don't know that there's a difference between parking lot, street, and trails, but I, I want to make sure before I vote yea or nay on this, that, that these people, that this contractor is capable and incompetent to do all that we're asking them, and just not assuming it.
Oh, I, I am fully confident that they can perform this work. I think what you, what you're referring to, Mr. Kellogg, is, is going, going the other way. When you have a, when you have a general contractor trying to do specialty work, this, this work is, Vance Brothers performs this type of work on a regular basis, and we are fully confident that they can, will successfully complete all aspects of this project.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that.
Any other questions of staff? All right, now I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-one seventy-one.
If I can find it on my screen. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one seventy-one, award of contract fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, micro-surfacing project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously, five to zero. As for the first read of Bill thirty-one seventy-two?
The first reading of Bill thirty-one seventy-two by title only, and ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction, Inc. for the twenty sixteen curb replacement project, city project number sixteen dash two-three-two dash two-zero-one in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and two dollars and eighty-three cents, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would ask Mr. Grass to make this report.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. What we have before you this evening is the award of a contract for our annual curb replacement program. Uh, this year's work will be taking place in the Madison Creek or Estates and Falcon Crest areas. Also, um, as we started last year, the, uh, this will also involve replacement of curbs in front of, uh, two hundred and forty-four driveways scattered throughout the city that were identified, uh, as in need of replacement when public works staff did an overall inventory of the city, uh, earlier, or last winter. Uh, we do recommend award to Terry Snelling Construction. Uh, Terry Snelling has done a number of concrete projects for us over the past several years. And again, we also include the scorecard for council consideration.
Any questions of staff? Councilmember Stevens?
Been a little while since the budget, but I thought we had a half a million dollars for this stuff. Is, we not spending it all this year, or what?
Um, we will, we always find extra. I mean, our, by the time, between what we have surveyed the prior year and by the time we get around to the contract, um, we will definitely be pushing up towards the five-hundred thousand dollar mark.
Any additional questions? I'll mo- I request a motion to, or to entertain a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-one seventy-two.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve Bill thirty-one seventy-two, award of contract fiscal year two thousand and sixteen curb replacement project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously, five, zero. Ms. Warner will move on to resolution sixteen twenty-seven.
The reading of resolution sixteen dash twenty-seven by title only, a resolution of the Raymore Si- Missouri City Council providing a procedure and schedule for establishing the charter review commission as required by section fourteen point eight of the Raymore City Charter.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir. This past January, the city council held a work session to discuss moving forward with establishing a charter review commission and having them begin their work. The previous charter review was conducted in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight. At the January meeting, the city council requested that the item be brought before you all at the first May meeting with staff recommendations for any changes to the previous process of choosing commission members and a recommended calendar associated with the process. These staff recommendations were presented to the city council on May second. Following council discussion of the recommendations, staff was directed to bring forth the final version of the process and a calendar for council consideration. Resolution sixteen twenty-seven before you this evening is now before the council for consideration. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll enter, I'll entertain a motion to resolve resolution sixteen dash twenty-seven.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we approve resolution sixteen dash twenty-six, establishing a procedure and schedule for establishing the charter review commission.
Second.
Uh, the, the second is out of order. Uh, Councilmember Kellogg, for clarification, you, you mean sixteen dash twenty-seven.
Yes, I did, what did I say?
You said twenty-sixth. It's all good.
I'm sorry, yes, I did mean twenty-seven.
With as tongue-tied as I've been, I can't criticize, fair enough. Okay, so there's a motion regarding resolution sixteen dash twenty-seven?
And seconded.
Now there's a second. Um, with that, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously, five to zero. That concludes first readings, moving on to public comments. Any member of the public can come forward and, uh, please state your name and address and keep your comments as stated to a maximum of five minutes. And seeing no members of the public coming forward, I'll close that and move to mayor council communication. Um, a law school believer of the rolling ball, I will, uh, start with one end, Councilmember Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you for the correction. I, see how easy it is for me to transpose? And I, I, I was absolutely right in this mind, so thank you for that. And I apologize. Um, the, um, I don't really have any comments tonight. What I do is have, is a question of, of staff, and, and they may need to get back in touch with me. But, um, as going through my exercise, my daily exercise, walking and that, I've noticed, um, some erosion in the, uh, particularly along Huntsman, uh, between the sidewalks and the curbs where the, uh, the, the ground has washed away, eroded, and there's openings underneath the, uh, the, uh, inlets for the, the, the storm drain sewers at the street. And I'm kind of curious if staff is aware of it, I'm, I'm quite sure they are. But, um, what, if there's a plan going forward, I'd kind of like to know what that is. Uh, I'm not asking for answers tonight, but give staff a heads up as to what my concerns are. So that's all I got tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember of Douglock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Um, of course, since we've recognized retired teachers tonight, I have to say something about that. Um, I'm just happy that the city recognized that group, the Missouri Retired Teachers Association. I know that they do a lot of work with the schools and with the state for the schools. Um, so I was happy to see that proclamation tonight. Um, and also, I talked about this a little bit last time, but just great big shout out to our city staff for, I mean, through, in this meeting, we've heard about all the money that, that your awesome work is, is saving the people in Raymore, the mud jacking equipment in the sidewalk repair, saving tons of money, um, the streetlights, I'm getting there. Just being, you know, in the front of the ga- on the front of the game, um, for the geo-bonds, that's saving us money. The streetlight purchase that we're gonna get with the geo-bond, or with our bond money is, again, saving money everywhere, it's, it's awesome. And then last, um, I heard from some people out in Noel Creek this week. And so again, I want to give a shout out to city staff. The people out there on North Prairie really appreciate your work and the work with MoDOT fixing that road out there and that approach to the highway for them. So I just wanted to let you know that they contacted me, they appreciate your work, and thank you for that. That's all.
All right. Councilmember Huback?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Councilmember Stevens?
No comments.
Okay, um, I will go as a council member, not as the mayor. Um, but I will say thank you to, um, both, both Mr. Goffey and the members of Gilmore and Bell. Great to have you guys always come out, that's wonderful news about our bonds. Um, it's great to see everything in that whole realm moving forward well. Um, you know, as a fa- having a father as a teacher, I have to say that I, I don't even know why we call them retired teachers, they're just teachers with no class in session. Because even when they retire, um, they still have a love for kids and students. And, uh, uh, my father is a testament to that. I will personally acknowledge, this is a very sad week in the Morehead household. My eighteen-year-old little girl just graduated from Raypack High School and got to enjoy the graduation last Friday night. Um, but I have to say, I was impressed with the four hundred-plus students and to hear the, uh, just incredible volume of scholarships that all of the, all of them earned. Um, yeah, clearly, Raypack had a wonderful year this year, so that's a compliment to everybody. And, uh, but boy, it's sad to see my daughter moving on. Um, still trying to keep her at home, she wants to go to way to college. And, uh, I, Mr. Mastine, you're welcome to correct me, but, um, I remember, uh, Mayor Kirkoff used to always mention the weather and the farmer's market, but I believe the farmer's market officially opens on June seventh. Fourteenth, thank you, that's why I needed corrected. So, uh, but, so we're ready for that to come around again. And with, uh, TB Hannah Station, uh, up and running, I think it's gonna be an exciting summer for that. So I can't predict the weather though, so, uh, good luck on that, I hope it doesn't rain. Uh, with, that's all I have. Mr. Fearborn, do we have any reason to go into executive session?
We do not, sir.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move that we adjourn tonight's city council meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? It's unanimous, we're adjourned.